All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Dudley Board of Selectmen FAA Special Joint Meeting on Thursday, April 27, 2023. As always, we'll call this meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, without objection from anyone else, hopefully, I'll chair the joint meeting. And the FAA is, we have one FAA member, thank you, John.
Hi, John.
Then they'll act separately. All right, let's start with the Town Administrator's Report.
Mr. Chairman, yesterday I issued a press release from my office that reads as follows: At a special ballot election on April 25th, Dudley voters solidly rejected a proposed plan to address the tough economic challenges facing our town with a single vote. Out of the 2,962 votes cast, 701 were in favor of the proposed five-year financial plan, and 2,261 people were opposed. The message was loud and clear. While the response was a decisive no, I don't see it as our community collectively ignoring the financial challenges that must be addressed, but rather a message that they want more options and a higher degree of control over the difficult decisions that must be made as a community. With the April 25th voter mandate in mind, we will go back to the drawing board with this clear directive and provide voters with the opportunity and options to decide the level of municipal and educational services that they will support and expect. So, mea culpa, Mr. Chairman. We got the message loud and clear, I certainly did, and we're back to the drawing board. And I'd like that to be the premise of tonight's meeting, is to have a dialogue as to how the board wants to proceed. I'd like to get some input from the schools, the Chair of the School Committee, Mrs. Carmen Yanni is here tonight, as well as their Finance Director, Rich Matthew. So, my other takeaway is that the Board of Selectmen do not support the idea of funding either town services or education below level service funding, meaning that throughout this process, it's been my understanding that we want to maintain services as they currently exist today. So it comes down to me to be a public policy decision, how do we want to proceed? Do we want to proceed with another bite of the apple, maybe with a redesign and another look at what the options were we presented to voters, learn from that mistake, and send it forward again? Or do we want to just say the voters have spoken and take the cuts that are going to be presented? So there's draft budgets in front of everyone. It's the big line item spreadsheet.
Sorry, the draft budget, so they're not finished, there might be some typos.
Yeah, it is, it is.
Thank you.
Twenty-four hours of trying to respond to changes that they come through. So for now, I've made three adjustments to the draft vote, the draft budget in front of you. I've level funded the school assessment in the column marked FY 2024 Budget Request with Reductions and Adjustments. So that FY 2024 budget request with reductions and adjustments are predicated on the failed override.
This one?
That one. That's the first, that's the first column in blue. This is the same format that we used past override failed override. In the column marked Town Admin Budget Recommended with Override, and that would assume that we are going to send it to another vote in June, and the school committee agrees, but we'll have a chance to kind of have a discussion tonight about that. I've inserted an increase to the school assessment of $994,283, which is a number that has only been discussed but not approved or recommended or requested at this point by the school committee yet. But it's nevertheless, to me, it's a reasonable starting point for our discussion here tonight. And then third, I proposed, I had previously proposed early on to use 166,000 of remaining ARPA funds along with stabilization and a small amount of free cash to fund dam, stormwater, regulatory compliance, grant and project design, et cetera. At past meetings, that was the proposal, but unfortunately, we need to apply that money this year in FY 23 because of those same expenses and other unforeseen emergency repair expenses that require it to be used this year. So I've drawn down that amount of 166,000, 166,000 from the blue column marked Budget Request FY 2024 with Reductions and Adjustments. So that doesn't mean that that cost doesn't still exist. We were going to apply $166,000 to compliance and regulatory and address the issues that we're dealing with, with DEP at the cap landfill. We'll put it towards that. Instead, I am going to send that to the warrant in the form of an article and ask the town meeting voters to decide, based on the FAA's recommendation, how they'd like to appropriate money to address those issues. So these are basically, this spreadsheet is basically in the same format that we've been using right along. The second column presents another ballot vote in June with that $1.6 million deficit still existing in there that needs to be addressed. However, with this adjusted budget, and if we consider the idea of maybe putting two separate additional questions for voters to decide on, which would be the capital roof project, as well as the feasibility study, we're in the, between what the town needs, which remains at 1.6, 1,674,514. And what I'm proposing here tonight, again, it's in draft form, we haven't heard yet from the school committee, I'm just putting it out there as fuel for the, you know, the topic of our conversation here tonight. We would get an override request with the debt taking out, taken out of it, two separate, turn it into two separate votes. The operational override amount would be more in line with 2,668,797, as opposed to 4 million and change. So my thought, Mr. Chairman, is maybe in keeping with having a dialogue tonight. We also have to deal with a couple of unsettled line items in the water sewer budget. I know that I spoke to the commissioners on Tuesday as well, and they were meeting with Webster to talk about adjusting what is currently owed for us using them to process our sewer. So we don't have their final numbers as well, which is another reason why we wouldn't want to go ahead and take any certain vote tonight. But again, we have three more meetings, including tonight, to make this decision. We have, we have one on May 4th and one on May 8th. We have to take a vote if it's everyone's intention to send it back to the ballot, we must vote by the 8th. I'd like to have the budget article settled on the 4th and ready to be voted upon. My thought tonight was maybe we could speak with Mr. Matthew and Mrs. Carmen Yanni and kind of get an idea as to what the school committee's thought process might be at this point, and then have a larger discussion as to what my direction is from the board. Bearing in mind, Mr. Chairman, the whole time, and our second override request would still be in keeping with maintaining level service funding, not level funding, but level service funding, meaning that the services we provide today would continue on.
Any questions for the Town Administrator? Mr. Sullivan?
I have a question, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank Mr. Ruder for the work he put out, and I think he put out a well-thought, well-spoken, well-written statement regarding the results of the election, and I would like to just thank all the voters that came to vote. I think the percentage was somewhere around 30, which is extremely high for a non-presidential, but, you know, thank God, thank God it wasn't a close vote, because it was the other 70. But I just want to thank Mr. Ruder for the leadership, thank the people for coming, message sent, message received. Hopefully, everyone pays attention, gets their information earlier in the process, as opposed to 23rd hour when the school's been meeting for a year, at least six months of public hearings with virtually no input. That's all. More of a declaration than a question, but thank you.
All right. Yeah, I'm, same thing. Heard everybody loud and clear, doesn't mean problem goes away, all the celebrating and all of the, you know, victory lapsed by, by people I think were premature, because we still have a problem to solve. That's why we're here today. And I want everybody to pay attention. These are going to be the numbers, source of truth. These are the numbers that we're going to be looking at, nowhere else that they need to be coming in. So I'm looking for a good dialogue with everybody, so we can make a decision on what to do next. But, you know, as a selectman, you know, I think all of my colleagues up here will agree that, you know, we can't stand to see a cut to town services, especially, you know, one that, you know, brings us backwards. I've said for over a decade now, we can't go backwards, you know, we've done, we've only, we've come so far on, on the town side when it comes to 24/7 EMS, hiring extra officers, you know, doing innovative things like getting a brine machine to, you know, eliminate sand and salt, sand on the roads, things like that, you know. I don't want to keep doing things like that that add value to people's lives in a cost-effective way, so we, we have to figure this out. All right, so there's more work to be done. Do we need a motion, accept the report?
I'm moved. Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Well, so speaking of budget discussion, new business, budget discussion fiscal year 2024 FAA and Board of Selectmen discuss proposed fiscal year 24 budget.
Proposed fiscal year 24 budget and...
And take any votes relative there, too. I don't know if we'll get to a vote, I guess we'll see. To help this along, should we invite the school board and...
I think that'd be a good idea, Mr. Chairman, get an idea as to what they'll be discussing over the next few, few days, few weeks, and give them the opportunity here from us about what we're thinking about as well.
Kathy, you and Rich want to join us? So you have the... Probably, not that, you know, all our names aren't easily recognizable these days, if you can introduce yourself.
Sure. Kelly Zella. This is my first time around on a budget session, I'm serving my first of three years, so it's kind of a learning experience for me, but I appreciate everybody coming together to make this happen.
First year's the hottest one, that's fine.
Yeah. Kathy Carmen Yanni, Chair.
It's a perfect year for a first year, right? Rich Matthew, Finance Director from Dudley Charlton Schools.
How's the sound? Is it all right? So let's discuss spitballing some ideas.
Yeah, we've, we've had a few quick informal discussions, and I thought it would be a great opportunity for us to hear which, how the discussion's going to fall, and maybe the vote might be lined up, what the school committee might be considering voting on, their recommendation for the apportion of the funding. What's the thought process?
So last night, we were able to vote on the new assessments to the towns based on the House Ways and Mean Numbers and the other numbers that came in that allowed us some more additional funding. So we were able to lower the assessment to the town, to both towns, which is good. And that additional assessment was, let's see, that number?
That was the original one.
That was the original.
Version one.
Okay. So the, I will say, the original number that we had come to the town was an additional cost of 1,237,925, and we were able to lower that to 960,125 as an additional amount from last year.
And just as a small reminder, last year, the town funded some of our assessment through a warrant article. When we add in, that was a one-time source of revenue, when we add in the 2.5% increase on that base, we come up $34,158 short. That's why if somebody's sitting there doing the math, there's a slight difference between the numbers that Kathy just read and the, what's shown in the budget here.
Through the chair, and Rich, this is the, I think that was the transportation money that was added, that extra...
Yeah, so the House budget was kind to regional schools, it's unique to be able to say that. I had made it clear when we met with the Town of Charlton and in my memos to school committee, that we can't just expect $700,000 of new revenue to fall out of the sky. And yet what happened was additional revenue literally fell out of the sky. So the House budget proposes funding transportation, regional transportation at 100%. That's great news, but it has to be viewed in the context of history. In 40 years, they've only funded it at 100% one time. So there is some risk in utilizing those revenues, but at this point in time, I think that risk is appropriate to take, as the Senate historically has been a large supporter of regional transportation. And, you know, the tea leaves say that they should support it at 100%, in which case it should survive to conference committee, in which case we wouldn't expect to get it.
Just as an aside, you know, one of the things that we talked about is coming here tonight, obviously, and, you know, this is the level service that we need. And then we need to kind of have that conversation of where are we after that? Our administration is going back and looking at, you know, once we are able to provide them with additional numbers, working with you, they'll go back and work with the other administration throughout the town, throughout the two districts, not the two districts, I'm sorry, the two towns, and, and cut more. And our meeting is on May 10?
Yes, May 10.
Wednesday, May 10. That is where we are having the meeting to make the version two budget, if we need to go to version two.
And version two budget would be the level funding, the, the...
Correct.
Amount that you have budgeted without the override.
Right.
So through the chairs, is part of the discussion in the next school committee meeting, is that going to be to consider another June vote? Or don't, you know, a recommend, a recommendation if there were another June vote, is what I should say?
We don't, you know, it's not our right to make recommendations to you about how you process a vote, but we believe, you know, we do need the level, the level service budget to be able to run at level service. So if that necessitates a June vote, that's where we are, which we tried to lower as much as possible. So yes, I mean, I think that we heard from the town that they do not want everything wrapped in, and obviously, yes, that's too much of an ask, and we heard that. We talked a little bit about, you know, we know we, we need to get the feasibility study done. So whether that, whether you decide that that goes to a debt service or not, you know, what we heard that night at that, at that meeting we had with our residents was that they do not want that added to the tax base. So hopefully, we would level, we would put that on the debt service. And that's, you know, we want to do whatever it takes to make sure that our citizens are comfortable, and our schools are viable, and our town is viable.
And just for clarity sakes, this assessment number does not include the feasibility study?
Correct.
You would need to provide a separate warrant and source of funding for that.
Right. We talked, we, you and I had talked a little bit about, you know, do we need to have the roofs this year on a, on a ballot?
Mm-hmm.
And you do a much better job at explaining that than I, so do you mind explaining that a little bit?
No, no doubt.
Thank you.
So the roof projects have been bid out, we should have the final schedule of values, meaning the adjudication of the projected bid costs between the CMS roof and the DMS roof. But until this, until all the projects are done that were voted in the capital, our plan is to issue bans in July to ensure that we have adequate cash flow and don't have a deficit in the capital projects, and then bond that permanently sometime later on. But there should be, there will be no impact in FY 24 to the town. So whether you decide to do something now or wait on that, that's completely up to you guys. But we will not have a final number until, at the earliest September, and probably more likely October. And again, there is no assessment coming to the town for that. You know, what was discussed before was simply a prepayment, if you will, towards that. And again, the mechanism to provide, you know, future funding, but clearly, that is off the table now, and that's, you know, okay.
And I think what we heard at that meeting was, you know, what, the least impact we can at the moment is what our residents need, you know, with, with the electricity going up, with water rates going up and, and whatnot, you know. We feel like if we need to put this into next year for a, you know, for a debt exclusion, then that's maybe what we should look at to see, do we have new growth in our town in the next year, will that help us, you know?
Mr. Sullivan?
So, Rich, if I'm hearing correct, even though you're saying the bid, the process, everything won't be completed till the fall, essentially?
Well, the project will occur over the summer. During the project, there'll be change orders. There may be change orders that decrease the overall price or increase the overall price, and we won't know that until actual construction begins.
So you don't, you were saying something about pre, Kathy just had a phrase, pre-something. So as we put together your number, you put your number together, we put our number together. If, if the model, which I heard from loudly from people, were they'd rather dead exclude capital?
Right.
And we'd have to override the, the lower amount. You're saying now that you wouldn't want to dead exclude the roof this June for the money, or you would?
You do not need to have, we are not going to come for the money until next, till the fiscal year 25.
So that'd be like next spring, probably.
Right. Right, so if you want to give that grace period, then we can do that.
So you, so there's no upfront deposit for the construction, like they don't come in and say, we want 50% for material, and we'll do change orders?
We're going to do a bond anticipation note to cover those expenses for FY 24.
But those don't come due, they don't come due until...
We'll, we'll issue that, we'll issue that in FY 24, the payment will be due in FY 25.
So if you do dead exclude capital, that number's obviously going to be smaller. If we get a June election lined up, that'd be a smaller number, because you won't be putting the roof on till next year.
Correct.
Okay.
The roof's going on this summer.
No, 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 money on a ballot.
Right, yeah, right.
Not physically going.
It won't affect FY 24, it'll affect FY 25.
And believe me, that just as an aside, I had a family member that taught up there until this year. People don't understand the tubes coming from the ceiling with the pans going into the bubble sink in the rooms. That's not a scare tactic for those that don't think we're scaring them, that is a fact of life going on today as we speak.
And that's, that was the point of, the town did, the town meeting did approve...
Right.
To do the roof.
That's right. The voters approved that. So the bottom line, Mr. Chairman, you're right, it's not a matter of will we fix it, we've got to pay for it. We have to pay, the voters told us to pay for it.
Last year, the town told us, clear as day, that we have to fix it.
The failed override had the money for that included in it, because the town has to pay for it. This would propose, if we were to, like Mr. Sullivan, the line that Mr. Sullivan was going down was, it takes it out and it makes it a separate vote, yes or no. But whether it's voted yes or no, we have to pay for it.
It's already been approved and they're paying for it. They're saying defer it till next year. That's the point I was...
They could defer it to...
Yeah, till next year.
We could defer it till next year, or we could put it on this year and see what happens. And if the voters decide, this isn't a great year for us to do this, we'd have another bite of the apple in '25.
Can I, can I make a statement about that?
Carrie, yeah.
Oh, sorry. This first.
Thank you. Question. If we did do a debt exclusion for the roofs, if we did it now, would the, would that not affect, and I don't know who this question's for, would that not affect people's tax bills until 2025? That wouldn't start affecting their tax bills now, correct?
Correct, there, there will be no assessment in FY 24 for the roofs.
So even if it was put on the ballot now, and it was voted in the affirmative, it's not going to financially affect the taxpayers until 2025?
That's correct.
I, I think if we're going to do that, it makes sense to put it on now, so we're not going last minute.
Can, can I ask?
First payment's not due until '25.
Can I just ask a point of question, like, just for clarity, if, if you do that, and you, we, we know we need Shepherd Hills feasibility, feasibility study, so I just wonder if we have the feasibility, so we can't lump that in with, with the, the roofs? Because part of that, there's a lot of feedback, sorry, part of that would come due, right? Like, can, can you, are you allowed? Good, okay. Part, are you allowed to do that? You know what I'm saying? Like, if you put both of them under the same debt exclusion, and one comes due before the other, can you do that or not?
I, I think if we, and this is just me... I, I think if we, and this is just me talking out loud, I think I would like to see it done separately.
Agreed.
Because if, if there's one thing I've heard over the past month or two is more control. Voters want more control to do what they're voting. They want a men, they don't want one big, all-you-can-eat buffet, they want an à la carte, they want to pick their own man.
And I will, I will say, too, that, you know, we were supposed to, we have, we were supposed to pay the bill on June first for the feasibility study. But obviously, we don't have that money right now. So we are talking with the MSBA to allow us to wait until that town meeting vote, you know, to make sure that we're okay. But if we don't get that, I don't know, you know, we don't know if they'll let us go forward with.
Yeah, there, there, there's every expectation that they'll work with us, knowing that something is on the ballot for June twelfth.
Right.
Even if it's not approved by June first, which is their technical deadline. But they have somewhat wig, a level of wiggle room. But it, it won't extend into July thirty-first or August first. It really would be, you know, sometime in the month of June.
Right. I guess my, my, I just want to make sure voters understand that if we don't enter into feasibility, we could lose the cha, you know, we would lose, we will lose the chance of being able to stay in that program, which would provide us potentially a school with a lot of it reimbursed to us. So it's a lot of possible free cash to get back.
And just as a reminder, the cost of the feasibility study is reimbursable from MSBA, regardless of whether or not the project is ultimately approved. So the investment of four sixty-three will come back to you at whatever the reimbursement rate is, you know, fifty to sixty percent. You know, so having that opportunity, you know, is, is an important one, especially given the fact that Shepherd Hill is now celebrating its fiftieth year in existence, and hasn't undergone major renovations, other than really a roof project in windows and doors twenty years ago, about ten years ago.
Mr. Mas.
No, thanks, that, that's really helpful, that, to understand, like, priorities in the school. Knowing that it was part of the five-year plan with the, the funding formula, how to, how the first ballot was put together, did we know that we could have done that or delayed that roof vote? Or is that barely new information? Do we know?
No, we, of, of course, we didn't have to include the roof.
Okay.
As part of.
Yeah, right, I know.
That was the mechanism to provide the funding for the next four years.
Oh, yeah, no, I get that part, but did we know that we, if, say, that didn't come up, we could have waited a year? Is that, okay, we did, okay. That's what I was trying to get at.
I think what, what we were tasked with was coming up with one question to provide a stability over the next five.
Absolutely, no, I, 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 I'm all, yeah, that was, that was the thing, because I'm just trying to, like, put this together, and, you know, I think people couldn't make that, you know, a lot of, like.
No, agreed.
Right.
Absolutely.
So I just want to know, oh, so this is another lever for us to pull, so to speak, if we, if we choose to, like, wait, wait a year on that, that's all. Okay. I didn't know if that was, like, breaking news from today that, okay.
So, so Rich, on the fifty, well, not going to pin you down, on the partial reimbursement on the study, that technically wouldn't come back to the town as cash, it would be given to us as a credit going forward on an assessment.
Exactly.
Right.
So, so to use round numbers, if it was, if it's five hundred, which we know it's not, you get two fifty, that two fifty would be banked.
It would be reserved on our books and, and credited to you in the next available fiscal year.
Right, okay. I'm sure people at home are going to want to know that.
Right.
Slush fund.
Nah.
Only for the town.
I'm making a joke. Mr. Matt, Mr. Lamarche was very clear the other night. I wish he was able to laugh. Well, that's interesting.
Any thoughts, any questions from FAA?
What's, yeah, you made this, what's the timeframe for that money to come back?
That, that I don't, I think it's after the feasibility study is completed and accepted by MSBA. But I haven't gone through that process myself. Superintendent Lamarche has, and he may have a better time, understanding, but we can reach out to them and inquire about that.
You're saying, so if it's, if it's roughly two fifty coming back, that would be, like, set up the educational account type of thing, or you have the?
No, it'll be reserved on our balance sheet and used as a credit towards your assessment the next available budgets, like.
Credit towards the assessment.
John's got a text.
That's going to appear in order for you to qualify for that, it's going to appear on this ballot.
It has to be approved by, by June first. MSBA will probably give us the wiggle room to extend it to June twelfth or thirteenth, whatever the election date is.
Was there anything procedurally we had to do with FAA or no?
They have a, they have a quorum now, so they should open their meeting. At minimum, have to open. In case you take any action.
Open the meeting, now you have a quorum. Do you, I mean, we could open the meeting, did you, I mean, would you have to open the, open just the Sleppert's meeting?
Yeah, because there's only two people.
So, I mean, if I, I'll defer, if you run the chair, if you want to open this joint meeting, if you want.
Okay. We'll, we'll open the FAA portion of the meeting as well, so it is a joint meeting, so it's okay with you all facilitating the meeting.
So, Mr. Chairman, as a, part, one of the handouts here is if we were to move forward with a, what is known as a, well, if we were to move, move forward and put a vote on the June ballot, what you're looking at is a sample as to what it might look like. So we're, we're used to an article that shows, shows bottom lines, one article is voted on at town meeting, and that appropriates our money for, for the year, unless we, we make a change in October. What we would have to do at the May town meeting is present a contingent budget, because the May town meeting would precede the June ballot. So what you would have as part of that vote, and part of that article, is a non-contingent appropriation. That means if the override fails, this is, this is the proposed budget for FY twenty-four. That's the non-contingent appropriation, and it shows the bottom line for each one of these departments. To the right, it shows the funding source for those bottom lines. So if you look, I plugged, for, for the purpose of our discussion tonight, I plugged in the level funded amount for the schools, and everything else, and it comes down to including enterprise funds, twenty-five million dollars. That would be, but again, it's four million dollars with enterprise, so I don't want anybody to get the wrong impression with that number. The contingent appropriation means that this article is passed, it's been voted at town meeting, it goes to the ballot in June, and those additional amounts under contingent appropriation are added to the non-contingent appropriation. So you're saying, if it, if we're going to vote a budget of one hundred dollars for this department right now, we're also going to vote a contingency that if the override passes in June, we'll approve another twenty dollars for that department, and that's the way that works. So what you're looking at is the difference. If you look at contingent appropriations, and you look at the bottom line where it says one million, six hundred and seventy-four thousand, all of those additional appropriations, which are predicated on a June ballot, a June ballot that's successful, it adds up to one point six million dollars additional for the municipal side of the funding. The regional budget, the vote would include an additional nine hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-three. So the total override amount for, and this is just, this is just for a operational override, would be two million, six sixty-eight, seven ninety-seven, with the debt, with the capital pulled out of it, the roof and the feasibility study. That would be voted separately. So we would, we took a all-encompassing, one-question vote. We reduced it as much as we could, and we make it three separate questions. Two debt exclusions or capital exclusions, we could ask Rich, Rich Carminiati, the difference between the two, and ask him to clarify that. That would be up to the board to give me direction on which way you wanted to go with that. And as well as, it would be the operational override for two million, six sixty-eight, seven ninety-seven. So it would be a three-question ballot.
Do you want to get that recommendation now?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
The only reason I wouldn't do it now is because we still need some input from water and sewer.
And maybe, uh?
And, but, and we have two more meetings. I would say on May fourth, we want to definitely take that vote. Okay, now, look at the, at the warrant.
So Rich, more homework to do, and then probably be asked for a recommendation at the fourth or the eighth.
Which Rich are you talking?
Carminiati.
Oh.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, if I'm hearing it right, we're going to potentially dead exclude the study, and then override the smaller amount?
And dead exclude the roof?
But not till next year, I thought.
No, I think you're doing two dead exclusions and one override for both.
Just a matter of what, the, the timing was a discussion.
That's what we talked about, yeah.
So, you know, so it sounds like, you know, we have to decide if the, the roof is going to go earlier, because a lot of people were saying, you know, earlier is better.
So can we, can we, I guess the question I would have, if it, discussing it over my head, I apologize. If we dead exclude the roof with an affirmative vote this June, we can defer, as Carrie said, there'd be no payments this year, we can defer the impact till next year?
It's a nothing burger right now, from what I understand.
No, but I mean, it's, it's two bites, if it fails, we have another shot next year.
So there's nothing to pay, there's nothing to borrow?
Right, but we'd have the authority, I guess.
Well, you can borrow without, but it's, the payment's not due until twenty-five.
Right. So we'd have the authority, Rich would have the authority, but we would have the authority to borrow that money, but we'd defer it, so we don't have to.
And this time, too, we're definitely going to have a high turnout again, citizens.
Right, it's a regular election.
And we're, they're going to get what they want.
And we'll go to the educational piece of, the roof is already approved, so it's either it gets paid for one mechanism, or it comes right out of the budget.
And that's the risk, Mr. Chairman. This is, that's one of the reasons we package it as one vote, but we'll, we'll let the voters decide in general. If you say no to the feasibility study, you say no to any significant amount of reimbursement for the high school. Sixty percent of a multimillion dollar project is a lot of money to say no to for a minor investment, but I'm going to stop now. The other one is, you've got a leaking roof, and other capital needs that need to be repaired. You say no to that. And, and the bottom line is, the town still needs to pay for that, because the voters said, we, we want you to pay for it, go ahead and go with it. So that's what we, you know, so it's a, it's a domino effect. It's got to be a very carefully thought-out vote in June.
Okay. So some recommendations in that next meeting.
Well, I'm, by the end of this meeting, I'm hoping I get my marching orders to, as to how, what do you want me to present the next meeting? If this is something that, you want me to pursue a contingent, a, a right ballot vote in June, I'm happy to do that, and we'll put together the contingent budget. We'll have the water and sewer commissioners here, proposed in meeting, and we'll take a vote, we'll be ready to go. And then we'll work on the warrant, on the second half of the fourth and on the eighth.
Because the debt exclusion stuff is relatively straightforward.
It's pretty straightforward, I think.
I mean, if, if, Mr. Chair, that's the school's amended plan for their side of it, and this is going to be a total number, which is less than almost half what it was, right? Well, sixty percent.
It's half of what it, what it was through the chair.
Right.
However, that doesn't mean that we cut two million dollars off of the, off of needs.
No, 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 not at all.
It only, it provides for a lesser amount of time for the operational part of it.
Right.
And we still have debt to pay off, and we still have to make a separate decision on the feasibility study, and all that's at stake. So it's, it's lower overall, it's, it's smaller bites is what it is.
Right. If you're asking.
More control.
If you're asking for the board through the chair, how to proceed to get us to the next meeting, I guess, right? I, like what I've heard, exclude some things, come back with a lower number?
Mr. Mas.
Yeah, agreed. I mean, again, very helpful for you guys, talking about, like, the revised, you know, plan, what the priority was. I was, it was good for me to hear about the roof. Again, in the loud and clear department, everybody said, if you only took those out, I'd vote for it. So I would, all those people who chose to vote no, I would think that the school and the town would, if we choose to put this on the ballot, that we hurt everybody and did, did the right thing there, and people would, would support it, knowing that the debt-excluded items would come off the taxes at some point, right? So gives people more choice and control. The only, the only thing I would just say, remind everybody, is like, those three things add up to the same number, right? So, huh?
Yeah, almost.
Almost, approximately, right? So, like, it's still the same amount, just broken down into things that will disappear after a certain time. That's, that's the only thing. Just, I, I know we're going to hear that, so, but at least people have to, a choice on, like, yes, I want that, but I don't want to pay for it forever. That was my point.
Through the chair, I, I think what, what I heard loud and clear is that they didn't want those three things to be on their taxes going forward.
Right.
They only wanted the smallest amount possible.
Right, but they would for the, for the time being, and to, because even though they're separate votes, like, all those three things add up to the same, same number. I just want to, in transparency, right?
I don't believe, and someone probably back there could confirm with me, that if you, once you have the override number in, and you have your debt service, I don't think that's going to add up to what the taxes would have been if you put all the override in. Is that what you're thinking?
Well, it's the same amount we're asking for, just.
Same amount we're asking for, but what I mean is.
Okay, I'm just, I just, it's just a question. I just wanted to think about it.
I think you're going down the right path. The number's going to be virtually the same, it's just going to, it's just going to be mechanism, funded mechanism differently.
Right. To, to the point where that's another thing we need to be explaining to everybody, right?
Yeah, because the way we looked at it, you know, you look at, you know, with an override and debt exclusions and whatever mechanism you want, either one-way, five-ways, twelve-ways, over time, your, you know, your taxes go up two and a half percent, and your costs go up at, if it's four or five percent, then the two lines intersect at a certain point in the future, and that, that doesn't change.
No, let him, he's talking about graphs, let him go.
He can just not tell us.
Rich.
Yeah, I, I just want to make something clear. The amount that was included for the roof as part of the override is not the full amount of the debt or the cost of the roof. All right? So, you know, when we, when, when you start talking about they're going to add up to roughly the same thing, they're not necessarily going to.
Okay.
Okay? Just so we're clear on that one aspect of things.
Right, no, no, thanks, no, like I said, like, if you're basically, like, here's one number, and we're just splitting it three ways, that's.
But the estimate's the estimate, right?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, the, the original estimate would be a good guideline to use, even though the bids came in lower.
Yeah, yeah, well, another point, right? All these numbers have some variability to them, and if you look at three months ago's number and today's number.
Absolutely.
It's going to vary slightly, and it's, it's not best practice to.
Again, I just, I just want to try to be as clear as possible.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. I have one more thing, Mr. Chairman.
How much, what is the, what is the current number?
I honestly don't remember the split, be, off the top of my head. I, I think it was about three point five of the seven point five was Dudley's share, but I could be.
No, but I mean the roof.
The, the bid, the bid came in at five million dollars. We don't have the exact split between Dudley and Charlton for both roofs yet. The total for both roofs is five million dollars on the bid.
Yeah, because I thought it was somewhere around one point four.
That's what I thought, so.
That was.
I'm going to call Mr. Signovich now.
I, I'm going to ask for one thing with the three, when we have the three questions. Whomever is in charge of the math behind that, if, if we could get, question one will cost you X per thousand, question two will cost you X per thousand, and for how long? If it's a debt exclusion, it's a dollar per thousand for how many years? I, I just, I think we should be providing the math on that and the timeline.
No, I can't.
And it shouldn't be up for interpretation, it should be, here's the num, here, here's It should be, here's the num, here, here's what you're voting for. You're gonna get this and it's gonna cause this amount for this amount of time. You go to the store, you know how much a pair of shoes cost you. This shouldn't be any different. People should know if it's for twenty years or forever. And then there's no discussion and things get change, uh, misinterpreted and shared and then it becomes truth. Once it's, once it spreads. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Not like I talked in a circle.
No, no, it's, so, so people are also asking for more clarity on on how how the numbers work. Like I thought I'd I'd ask for a little bit more spread on what the tax will look like every ten thousand or something like that. But we need more, more detail and less averages and more wider projections.
And how many cups of coffee, Mr. Chairman, like you're.
I'm still a little sore about the football field a few years back on the cups of coffee calculation. So I I would, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go down that path.
I think that a lot of people just want to know what it looks like for them, for their tax bill. I think a lot of people say, this is my budget, you know, I just retired, I'm sixty-five years old. Is it gonna add a hundred dollars a month to my budget? Is it gonna add, you know, a dollar? They, I think people just want like, like, I can kind of sort of count on this.
And with that number, they'll, they'll know that. They can look at their tax bill and see, my house is assessed at three hundred thousand dollars. It's going to cost me an extra dollar per thousand. Then they'll know it'll cost them three hundred dollars a year. Because each of us is different. My house is valued different from yours, different from his, different from everyone else. So it's hard to say this is going to cost the average person X. Because who's the average person? That's maybe five percent of us that's the average. It's gonna cost a little more, a little less. And that way, if you've got the money per thousand, everybody can know what it'll cost them. Because that's what it matters, that's what matters. How much is it gonna cost me? And same thing for you, it doesn't matter what it costs me, what does it cost you?
Mr. Chairman, just now that we're talking about clarifying things, two two takeaways from that. First of all, I absolutely will make sure that we do, as the board directed and Mr. Signovich brought up, as long as we understand that there's certain way, you, you, we're not gonna be able to put that into the ballot question itself. That wasn't what you were asking, right?
Maybe a fact sheet, fact sheet for communication.
Yep.
Including the Webster Times.
And cable?
Chop is bad.
Should we put it on cable, too?
Yes.
Smoke signals, a billboard, what else you got?
Smog chopper goes to everybody.
And then, and then the other item I wanted to mention, and I think this is important. If the override fails, the plan remains unchanged, we're still gonna have to put five hundred and thirty-four grand from capitalization, uh, stable stabilization into a failed override attempt to have enough to go through next year. If the override passes, we wouldn't include that money. We, that that money would remain in stabilization.
So if it fails, Mr. through the chair, would spend that to zero?
We'd be pretty close because we still have an article to address at town meeting for regulatory compliance because of the OPA, we pulled out a hundred and sixty-six grand from OPA that we proposed to use originally.
Okay. Mr. Sol.
You know, as the ideas are flowing, they're all good ones. And it's hard to correct people in real time that are second guessing in real time or using wrong numbers in real time. Because I did see a question, somebody had put out, oh, can't they just defray the regulatory compliance till next year? No, we already got, since I've been on the board, we already got dinged at least twice for stormwater management non-compliance. Rudy knows better than most. Mr. Murray, we're into dam safety now, dam inspections. We're gonna get, if we don't take care of the things that are mandated of us, we're gonna get dinged. It's better to have to pay the money upfront. So they're all great ideas. A lot of people don't have malicious ideas. Some do, I think, but a lot don't. But the the questions are not out there in the cyber world, the answers aren't out there. Like dam compliance or regulatory is a simple phone call, just call and say, what does that mean? Or come to a meeting and looking around real quick. Don't have a stellar turnout tonight, but some stuff can't be deferred. Some people think that it's a great idea and we appreciate your thought. But I feel confident with our full-time professional staff and this board as we're constructed and other boards, George's board, these folks here in front of us, Kathy's board, if it's such a great idea, I'm pretty sure we've either tried to use utilize it or it's come up in discussion, has either been implemented or not. So it sounds great, say defer this or can't you do that, like, you know, pay half of this. Some things we just can't do it. And if I'm pontificating, I apologize.
Yeah, there's requirements, there's legal moments.
Steve, depending upon what you said, then does it make sense to do, if the roof doesn't need to, if not till FY twenty-five, does it make sense to not, and I don't know, I don't know, I'm not, I'm just saying it out loud, makes sense to not do the debt exclusion for the roof if it doesn't have to come to payment for another year so that the tax bill doesn't look like it did in the override vote? Does it make sense? I don't know.
It won't change until we start paying.
Right, I I know it's kicking the can down the road for like a year, but I don't know if that's a good thing or not.
I I think it's top of mind for people right now. People know, oh geez, we gotta do the roof.
Kathy?
Um, I would just like to comment that I think that, you know, considering you don't want to pay for a special election and you'd want to know your funding mechanism before next June, I think you better, you're better off doing it this June.
Okay.
And but really educating people that this is, this is what we're asking for and it's not due till next year and it could be less based on what the numbers come in at.
Rich.
Thank you.
Good evening. Everybody's had a pretty good dialogue. I'd like to offer something that I think is important. This building was paid off in December. So there's four hundred thousand dollars coming off. So all things being equal, we're losing our ability to raise taxes. That's one of the the takeaways that I'd like to see come from here, that Mr. Johnson, Mr. Chairman, your taxes will remain similar. Had that debt been there, if something comes off and we replace it with a similar amount, you're only looking at two and a half. That's that opportunity that I think was kind of lost because it was going to be an increase of significantly more than four hundred thousand going on there. So that's the perspective I'd like to.
So what would go on there, Rich?
I'm looking at my numbers and I'm saying the debt excluded number is gonna be four hundred thousand dollars less for this fiscal year coming up. So you have the opportunity to buy a, an, a twenty-four Toyota for twenty-three prices. So it it's, it's good to be able to get something in there this year. I know operationally, we don't want to be paying ahead, but it's the chance to put something in there. The debt that we have right now that is excluded is gonna be part of an issuance. So we're not going to be able to keep that DE one up. I had the spreadsheet a long time ago where we had pick a point in time, oh, five, ten, and the actual looked like a ping pong ball as opposed to picking a, a point in time and managing that DE one. So the question wasn't exactly, what's your tax bill going to look like? Well, depends on what comes off. There was more of a plan that sort of paralleled the capital improvement plan that was always adding something to it so that instead of your taxes going up two and a half plus new growth, maybe it wasn't agreed upon four or five percent so that there was no knee jerk reaction to a higher tax and it was almost something you could plan for.
I still, I just don't know. We we have capital improvement plans, we have, we have, we've had all those meetings. I don't remember anything that was proposed that wasn't approved. And I don't remember it's not a steady supply of stuff that was approved.
Right. The textbook answer is to make sure that you have, you're almost using the DE one as a model and a tool to make sure that you're putting as much as you can there as opposed to having the up and down on it. You have some items that are coming there, but nothing, nothing for that big four hundred.
Okay, I think we have something now. Thank you. Mike?
Uh, Rich, if you can stay up if you are. Of course. We've got, um, two, the two main things that we financially make sense to do is obviously the Shepherd Hill, study for the Shepherd Hill and get the roofs done. We can have numbers tonight and I'm willing to call vote on FAA to approve it, um, if somebody wants to do that. But, um, the numbers should be pretty easy to figure out. So we know that we have to come up with four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, Rich. How would we pay for that on a debt exclusion? What is, what are your lending options for four hundred and sixty-three thousand? And interest rates, what are your interest rates now? What are your lending options? Are we a five-year, ten-year, can we do that for twenty years?
That's, that's a, that's a good question. And that's, that that's not a, a palaver or a stall on my end. I'm thinking if it's an obligation, the school committee would authorize the borrowing, the voters would approve it and there would be a, a borrowing there. I'm, I'm trying to think. We can pay for our own engineering with a, with a ballot vote authorizing it. You can go through, we've, we've borrowed money for a water project.
What's our short-term borrowing rate right now? I mean, it's probably gonna go up in another couple of days, day first, but what is.
It's a Republican talking, there we go. It's, we're borrowing money at, at four or five percent.
Four and a half percent. And what can we do the, the survey at? How many years can we put that out? Can we do a five-year bond on that?
Engineering is five, I'd have to look, there's a chart. We can, we can do some homework for it.
You're talking about a hundred thousand dollars a year to be paid back. And then the two fifty is gonna go, or roughly two fifty is gonna go in here to offset an assessment in the future, so. That, I mean, what is, what is a roughly a hundred thousand dollar payment meaning taxes? About a ten percent, ten cents, correct? So then, so why, so we should be putting that on for a question, for an override for that. We should be putting on a question for an override for, for the roof. So we need to have, to know what the price of the roof, we're gonna, we're gonna ask for a, a debt exclusion on it. And then we can figure out how we're gonna pay for it. Can we go twenty years on the roof?
Oh, sorry. If I may, um, so the roof is not your debt. The, the, it's the school committee's debt. That's the vote that was authorized in September of two thousand twenty-two. So when we look to pay back the roof, yes, we will probably look to borrow for twenty years.
Twenty years, okay.
Okay, um, but you'll receive an assessment from us. And the, what the town has to decide is whether or not that assessment will be excluded, uh, it will be a debt exclusion.
Right, how much, how much is that payment gonna be?
Unfortunately, until the projects are all complete, we're not gonna have, go out for permanent bonding. Okay, so until the projects are complete, meaning the roofs are completed this summer and that, and all of the other, uh, smaller items are taken care of as well, we're not gonna have that final number that's gonna go out for bonding. So that, that bonding won't occur until sometime in the future. That's, that's how you're not going to receive an FY twenty-four assessment for this.
Okay, so, so what you're saying is don't put it on.
What I'm saying is I don't know the mechanism off the top of my head and I would want to talk to, uh, Unibank Fiscal Advisor about the way that the debt exclusion question needs to be formatted for the town.
And we wouldn't know the final number.
We won't know the final number until the fall, basically, correct.
So you're gonna put a roof on the, on the middle school, but we don't have, I thought we had a contract that I was looking at.
Again, we do. We have a bid, okay? That bid came in at five million dollars. As I sit here tonight, I still don't have the delineation of the five million dollars between Charlton Middle School and Dudley Middle School. Okay, we'll have that information sometime.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, I'm just thinking, we, you know, we just had an override and it failed and it failed very big. We had about twenty-three percent were foreign. If, it, it's April twenty-eighth, we got, you don't have a lot of time to talk to people and show them what we're doing here. So if we don't even have numbers, how do we construe a debt exclusion and tell people this is what it costs? I mean, just to kind of pivot off of Mr. Johnson, you know, or I mean, Mr. Sigandovich, people want to know what this is going to cost, so.
We have the initial projection. The bids came in lower than the initial projection. When we have the schedule of values, meaning the delineation between Charlton Middle School and Dudley Middle School, we'll be able to give you a little better information. And then when the projects are complete, with change orders that are ultimately to occur, change orders perhaps increasing the price, change orders perhaps decreasing the price.
Let, let me, then, since we don't have a price, can we get somewhere close to what Dudley's share of that's gonna be?
I, I can certainly, yeah, I can certainly work, get those numbers over to Mr. Ruder, but I don't have them available for tonight.
Two and a half, two point five million for the roofs?
All right, so, uh, so I think we'll, we'll get that number, what's the date we're committing to at the next best number?
Again, I should have the delineation of the schedule of values, um, for sometime either tomorrow or the beginning part of next week. So, and at, in the meantime, what I'll do is speak with the Unibank Fiscal Advisor and figure out exactly what the debt exclusion vote would need to be for, for the town. If it has to include a specific number, then I would say perhaps it's wiser to wait. If it's just a blanket based on the initial, uh, borrowing amount and then subject to be lower, then I can certainly provide that information.
Yeah, because I think, you know, people are gonna come out again in a short period of time and they're gonna vote again for this. They're gonna need to know the numbers.
All right, so.
Again, the, the overall, the overall capital projects as approved totaled, uh, seven point five million off the top of my head.
I just don't want to confuse, because Dudley's voting for this, not Dudley and Charlton at the same time. Dudley's voting for what their tax is gonna be. So they're gonna want to know what their share of all of this is gonna be. Not the overall, I think, I don't think the overall makes sense to them. I mean, not, not makes sense. But I don't think they care about the overall, they want to know what, how it's gonna impact them directly. So that number's very important. If we're gonna get a debt exclusion on that, we're gonna have to figure out how to finance it.
And when we have those final numbers, we absolutely will get them to you.
So I guess my question to Rich is, on a debt exclusion for a capital project like that, we can, obviously, twenty years is.
Yep, have a.
Okay.
RFA, RFA at Unibank is probably in the next office over.
Okay.
Uh, from, from the school.
I'm just trying to, you, you said you had four hundred thousand popping off for the, for this building. So if you have a small, a small added, small one added on for the, for the, for the study and we have a small one, you know, a monthly payment on, I mean, yearly payment on the, on the roofs, I mean, it's still not gonna come up to, to the four hundred thousand that's gonna come off. So, so that, that's gonna be important for the voters to see that, is that their, their tax rate really isn't actually gonna change that much because one falling off here replaced by a couple others, so. Having those numbers are very important. And we don't have a lot of time to get that information out.
All right, so it sounds like we have a possibility to have the information for our next meeting on May fourth.
We'll definitely have it by then.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion on that new business?
I, I do have a question. As we build the version two to our budget, we were going with a level funded budget. However, because of the variance last year of the thirty-four thousand, one fifty-nine, are we able to, is there any room that we can zero that out? So that we don't, because us taking off thirty-four thousand off of the budget would mean almost double that because we have to take that off of Charlton's N two.
Can you take a look at that for next meeting?
Yeah, I will, I definitely will.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, any action that needs to come out of this?
Well, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor mentioned voting tonight. I, through you, I'd ask George if he wants to hold on that because I don't know if their final numbers have been decided. Water and sewer budget.
Yeah, yeah, just hold off, just finalize, you hope, no.
All right, so you think by Monday?
Yeah, I don't think so.
Okay.
Well, it has to be by May fourth.
But, all right, everybody by Monday, right?
You're right.
Great.
Hopefully, you know, I'll be by tomorrow so that, you know, we got all weekend for this. All right, any other discussion on this topic? So we have no action, so the next, uh, new business was Board Selectman, he has recommendations for town administrator officials to send override vote to June election ballot, so we're not ready for that.
We're not ready for that, but I don't know if that's the working intention right now and that's the way I pursue.
Do we need a motion for that?
May I?
Yes.
We could do the study in the roof tonight, could, could we vote on that? Would that help or work or anything?
Well, I don't know if we know an amount for the roof, that's the problem.
I'm just trying to.
It's a little blank check, so I don't think so.
Yeah. Yeah, all right.
All right, so we're not gonna have any, uh, any motions then?
Well, we.
Mr. Mas.
We can still give the town administrator some direction on what to do, work up numbers for scenarios, right, Jonathan?
Yeah, some, some numbers so we could like vote would be good from wherever they come from.
I'm doing the best I can.
So I, so my opinion.
I know you, I know you want.
My opinion, um, you know, because again, like I said, Sully said this earlier, I mean, he, Jonathan's been at this nonstop for months.
Yeah, he is.
And, you know, we need to think about how we want to see this. My opinion, the operational, obviously, I think we have to. My opinion, the operational, obviously, I think we, we have to ask, otherwise we're gonna, we're gonna fall behind and, and cut stuff and I can't, I can't, I can't be for that, for cuts like to that, to that extent, so, um, so I wanna let, again, let people decide like, like we always do, but we have to include the town and the school together on that. You can't, somebody mentioned, um, to me like putting everything on a menu like that and I just think the operational stuff is so tied together that it needs to be one article. The second one for sure would be the feasibility, 'cause we don't wanna lose that funding. And then depending on how the numbers come in for the roof and how we wanna play the timing, that could be a, a third. So it's either two or three in my book, Jonathan.
I'm, I'm worried.
Depending on the timing. That's, that's, that's where I stand.
Do we wanna-
These are the capital and operations elements.
So do we wanna make a motion and say how many votes will be? Would that help you?
I think it helps us and I think it helps Mrs. Carmini and Rich Matthew to bring back to the school committee.
Any proposed motions on the number?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, how would you like worded for three votes? Up to three votes, Mr. Chairman. I, I make a motion that we have a separate vote for the debt exclu, for a debt exclusion, the feasibility study, a separate vote for the roof and a separate for the, for a debt exclusion for the roof. Let me start again.
Well, you started, can I just interrupt in the middle of his motion just so we don't have to do it again?
Yes.
We wanna make sure we, we, if we're gonna motion like that, we need to either have a recommend, we have to ask Mr. Carmini if he, if, if the difference between capital exclusion, uh, and, and debt exclusion, because the first thing that's gonna happen when the, when the vote is taken is the next two weeks will be all about, why didn't she, how come he wants to do it this way and not the other?
And I'm trying to get this straight, so there's less-
Right.
So we'll hold off on the motion, we'll get the recommendation and then we'll word it. Okay.
So I'm gonna defer to our FA. If we can borrow for the feasibility study and they give you five years on it, we'd do it for the five years. To, to answer the town administrator's question, um, there's a debt exclusion where you're paying nothing but the debt service, the principal, the interest over the period of the time of the loan. If you go through and have a capital exclusion, it is a budgeted line item. So for cash flow purposes, it is there and ready to go the first day of the fiscal year. So if you needed $10,000, $20,000, $100,000, there's no issuance cost, you're not paying any interest, it's basically funded through the warrant process. So for argument's sake, if you had a million dollar capital exclusion and it was a budgeted line item and you performed the work internally or had your agents do it, uh, construction company do it, you could write checks almost as you needed to do it and it's a single year increase on the taxes.
I thought it, but I thought it wasn't the town's capital, so.
It goes into our assessment, it's-
Right, so if, if, if we were paying it through this office, we do exactly what Rich said, but we're not. It's part of the assessment, so how does it?
So that's a clarifying point. I, I appreciate that you'd like to go through and establish that you'd have three questions or two questions or a single question, whatever the board's, uh, preference. Maybe we get that information and that's something that goes on for, for the next meeting. I, you'd, you'd hate to act on less than perfect information.
So maybe, Mr. Chairman, maybe the, maybe if Mr. Signavich is gonna make a motion, you're gonna ask me to present, present something for, a recommendation including a differentiation between capital exclusion, debt exclusion, separated into three questions and ready to be voted on at the next meeting, something like that.
I'm, so, so I, I'm trying to wrap my head around the fact that we don't have anything really final and concrete to make a motion and a vote on right now, do we? I mean, we, we, we just had a vote for an override and we don't have, am, am I missing something?
It's, it's being done through the chair. We're separating it three different ways as opposed to a one-question vote. A one-question vote was just simply an override, proposition two and a half override, period and covered everything. 24 hours later, we're having a discussion about capital versus debt exclusion. We don't have, I guess the water and sewer commissioners had a meeting last night when we have to start, when it's gonna be some additional adjustments to their budget, which had, which we would wanna probably include in, into our figures at this point. And the school committee met last night for the same purposes that we met, is to have a discussion as to how to move forward and what, what they were looking for for numbers and there's been new information that came from the state in terms of funding transportation. So that's about 24 hours of a lot of decisions to make.
So how about this, instead of, instead of a motion, why don't you have prepared the scenarios of three, three scenarios, you know, with an override for the operational budgets combined between the school and, and municipal? And then two recommendations for the, uh, the two capital pieces. Let's just word it as that.
So moved.
Need a motion for that? Or just a correction? Thought we just said we're just gonna-
I know. You don't need a motion, do you?
No, it's just direction.
Instruct the town administrator.
Yeah, we're not approving anything. We just, we wanna see scenarios and the scenario we wanna see right now is that.
And that will include an explanation so you can make an informed judgment as to what to put on the ballot for capital versus debt.
Correct, yes, 'cause those questions have to be answered and it's not gonna be right here on the coffee. Okay, all right. No one opposes, I'm gonna move on to old business. All right, old business. Board of Selectmen Bond Counsel Compliance, Tobin Farms Road Betterment. Looks like we want someone to motion that the repairs to be made with the proceeds of the $401,000 road betterment bonds are required by public convenience and necessity. B, the private roads of ways to be improved by the repairs to be made with the proceeds of such bonds have been made to the public for a minimum of two years. And C, motion that the fire truck to be acquired with the proceeds of the $775,000 departmental equipment bonds will be owned by the town and operated only by town personnel for the fire department purposes. Mr. Carmini, explain that, what does that means?
Mr. Chairman, the board took a similar vote for A and B. It goes through and it tells Bond Counsel that Board of Selectmen viewed the road and deemed it unsafe. This road has had public access for more than two years, so we're not improving somebody's private driveway. This is a private road that's being improved, meeting these two pieces of criteria. The third item was added on, this is to make certain that the debt excluded item, which is a much future purchase, the fire engine will be operated by the town of Dudley. It's not going to be leased out to Thompson Speedway, the airport, private fire watch for whatever company, purchased by the town, operated by the town. And these are assurances that need to be provided to Bond Counsel.
Okay. It's the board's pleasure?
So I move that, uh, that the repairs to be made with the proceeds of the $401,000 road betterment bonds are required by public convenience and necessity. B, that the private roads slash ways to be improved by the repairs should be made with the proceeds of such bonds made to the public for a minimum of two years. And C, continuing the motion that the fire truck to be acquired with the proceeds of the $775,000 department equipment funds will be owned by the town and operated only by the town personnel and for the fire department purposes.
Second.
Gonna motion a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, unanimous. Thank you.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you, Rich. All right, Board Member Carmen, Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanna thank everybody for coming in tonight to work through this, to get more information through both boards, the school and the town, uh, through the FAA. Great job, well, well, well said. A lot of thought into this for Mr. Ruda to, uh, do additional work for us and, uh, wow, it's a lot of work as you can see and this is a draft and we are coming up with the scenarios to make it easier for everybody to understand and, and, uh, to, to make an informed decision on. Everybody has a lot of great input and, uh, very proud of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Kinda said it earlier, appreciate the turnout at the polls, you know, we'll never have 100%. 30 wasn't bad. As Mr. Ruda just stated at the end of our discussion, trying to pin these, these numbers down, just in the last 24 hours, it's been a moving target. State came up with extra monies that we didn't know about. School committee came in with a plan to defer out of their request. It can't be any more transparent, we're here on a Thursday night. You know, we're trying to pin down these numbers and we're in a time crunch and just appreciate the patience that most of the people have shown and as you said earlier, get the message out. It's all about the numbers, it's all about how it impacts each person. Thank everyone for being here tonight and for all the work that they've been doing and continue to do.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Signavich?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just looking forward to getting the final numbers for everything so that voters can make an informed decision. At the end of the day, this is their town. They dictate, they dictate a lot of things. They dictate the budget, they'll dictate what happens from here. It's up to us to get them accurate information so that they can make a proper decision. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mars?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just reiterate what I said earlier. Very strong message was delivered at the override vote. Everybody heard here and everybody mobilized instantly to get us together so we, we could meet tonight and, and have, have a beginning discussion to figure out what, what to do next. The work didn't stop, the work continues. I've had that conversation with a few people, um, since beginning of the week. People asked for a menu-like thing, that's probably what we're gonna give, give for people to evaluate. And I fully expect that by the time we put this on the ballot, we're going to, this, all the data you'll need will be there. Dollars per thousand, percents, all, all that stuff, it needs to be there. Five to seven times, we're gonna tell it again. I'll say if you have any other great ideas or ideas, come here, come to the meeting, let's talk about it, let's, let's, let's do that. Let's not, let's not litigate this over, uh, social media. Let's, let's come in and, and, and help and be part of the process. But the work goes on and I thank everybody for voting on the way they did to, you know, get us to the next step, right? So this is, it was, this is a participations board, if anybody hasn't figured that out. So, um, the people here who work here, the voters, everybody's involved. So I'll see everybody at the next meeting.
Uh, I'd just like to say, you know, thank you to everyone that came out to vote and thank you for everyone that was working at the vote. You know, that was an unusual, uh, volume, right? And it went pretty well, you know, with some lines, but it moved right along, so, you know, thank you everyone that was also working here, so, um, democracy in motion, right? All right. Departmental communication. Chief? You're all set. George? All set.
Just a real question. I just wanna, uh, thank the fire chief for putting on, uh, classes for us for the last three weeks. He recertified all of our officers in CPR training, so I just wanna thank for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Great collaboration, guys.
Jeff? All right. Rich?
I've talked for another 20 minutes.
Nope. Okay.
We'll get to it during the second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Let's do this again.